Welcome to B News Weekly. I'm Phil Gallagher along with B News producer Sidney Bowles, B News reporters Tad Stefanak, Veris Conley and Chris Flaherty, Anthony Matos with sports, Peter Brown with the weather and Gretchen Carey with the community calendar. Thank you for joining us. Town meeting on Wednesday approved Burlington's largest construction project to date, a long overdue $46 million police station. Police Chief Thomas Brown told B News, and I quote, "Saying it feels great, doesn't do it justice. There's no doubt in my mind that going forward three years when it opens, everybody in town is going to be proud of it." Since 1992, the police have been working in the 127-year-old Union School Building, which is full of mold and leaks, has cracks in the walls and windows, and fails to meet the needs of modern police force. The new building is expected to be larger than the current one and will include a fitness center, a common space for town gatherings, and a shooting range, among other amenities. The project will be bonded, and the Ways and Means Committee has recommended Burlington seek a debt exclusion override to help fund the project. That vote is expected to be on April 25, local election ballot. That wasn't the only major item discussed at this week's town meeting. Members also approved the town's $176 million budget, $14 million in capital projects funded through free cash, and expenses related to completing our connection to the MWRA. Ways and Means Committee Chair John Eiler says Burlington remains in good financial standing.
The focus for this year continues to be maintaining level services across the board. So in particular, we weren't looking at expanding into new areas. And you know, all departments had great ideas of things that could be done with more money. But the focus has been on keeping level services rather than spending more and expanding our services throughout the last year.
Also approved was a $245,000 appropriation for a math and English curriculum review for the school system. Town Meeting member Maureen Ryan shared her thoughts on the expense.
I am in favor of this article. And I just, as a school administrator in a neighboring district, I just wanted to comment on a few of the points that were raised. First is that curriculum is very expensive. And so having the right curriculum is important to do some analysis. And our kids deserve the best curriculum. When we want to see test scores and higher, and we want to see our kids getting into competitive programs, it really is important to have the newer and most appropriate curriculum and materials in front of the kids. So that's number one. Number two, the populations in our schools have changed. We have a lot of students. We have many multilingual learners that have come in. We see learning gaps still from the pandemic that exist. And we do everything we can to teach the kids. It is very important that our educators have time outside of the school day where they are compensated so that they can receive appropriate professional development and have the time to really dig down and have a voice in the curriculums that we use. And I think that's a big piece of this.
Town meeting adjourned shortly after 11:00 PM on Wednesday with significant items left on the agenda, including the town's plan to comply with the MBTA Communities Act, as well as a $6.7 million warrant article that would repair and expand the playing fields at Marshall Simons Middle School. The item was an unexpected bone of contention this week. The school committee voted 3 to 2 on Monday to pull the item from the warrant. Then, following a flurry of emails from constituents, voted 3 to 2 on Tuesday to rescind their vote and put the item back on the warrant. School Committee Chair Chris Monaco.
I changed my vote from postponing to rescind the motion because I felt that I had heard from so many people, I wanted them to have the opportunity to bring this to town meeting and let town meeting decide.
The project would focus on accessibility features like ramps and walkways for the upper and lower fields outside Marshall Simons, and would include track repairs, striping, new turf fields, scoreboards, LED lighting with visors, and general site improvements. It's a project everyone agrees would benefit both the schools and the town as a whole. But the issue lies with timing. Both the Ways and Means Committee and the Capital Budget Committee voted against the project, 4 in favor and 8 against, and 1 in favor and 4 against respectively. Ways and Means Committee Chair John Eiler, who supported the project in theory, warned against funding and now in the strongest terms because a comprehensive field study is still outstanding.
So the real issue here is that doing a $6.7 million project without having an actual documented plan of what we're doing with our fields in town and just deciding, let's do this one because I got 50 emails about how people are unhappy with the fields. And I accept that there is some real issue there to be addressed. But the right way to address it isn't to say, because a lot of people are complaining about this, let's put it in front of the list. Let's actually have a plan. In general, what we're trying to do with the financial team and with Ways and Means is plan, then execute. The wrong order is execute and then get around to having a plan as to how you're going to do it.
Town meeting is expected to return to the issue on Monday, May 20, at 7:00 PM. The Educators Association's contract expires at the end of the school year, and teachers have been at the bargaining table since December to negotiate a new contract. Their priorities include bereavement leave, more parental leave, and more time to collaborate during the school day. Here's Sidney Bowles with more.
Teachers have been holding actions recently raising awareness for their priorities. Eight weeks of paid parental leave, as well as adding 25 minutes to each school day and two extra days of school per year.
This is all in able to create some opportunity and time for early release days for students where our teachers would remain in the buildings, working collaboratively with one another while potentially also getting some of the professional development needed.
I met with teachers at the Burlington High School following a recent negotiation meeting to talk about it.
At this point, we do not have time in our schedules for everybody to collaborate at the same time. So we're looking for time for all of our educators to get together. Currently, our students need us in front of them. But for meetings such as IEP meetings, meetings to try and collaborate with other teachers, to figure out scheduling, to do those kinds of things, those are difficult to happen because everybody is in demand.
Let's face it, everybody wants to earn a living, right? So I'm not going to say that we don't want to raise. That would be a lie. However, the contract that we would like to settle, each and every time we have to settle a contract, is to make it so that not only can we earn a living, but we can work.
School Committee Chair Christine Monaco spoke about the negotiations by phone.
We've met with the union representatives a lot. And we're trying to reach a contract that works well for our students and our staff. One of our biggest concerns right now with the contract is making sure that we have the proper time on learning for all of our students, and that we have enough time for our teachers to collaborate so that we can provide the best education possible.
Teachers will continue working under the terms of the current contract until a new agreement is reached. For B News Weekly, I'm Sidney Bowles.
The Burlington Culture Fest is coming back this summer, June 10, to be exact. It began last year as the project of two local Girl Scouts, Gwyneth McNamee and Meghna Dinesh, who wanted to showcase the diversity of the Burlington community. It was such a success that the Parks and Recreation Department decided to take it on as an annual event, with McNamee and Dinesh serving as coordinators. Dinesh told B News, "A lot of people after last year's Culture Fest came to us and said, we want to do a table as well. So that's something we are looking forward to." The Culture Fest will be June 10 at 6:00 PM at Simons Park. Paris, France is hosting the Summer Olympics in just a few months. And you may be wondering why we're talking about that on this local broadcast. But it turns out, there's a connection to Burlington's corporate sector. Everbridge is located in Burlington and is a maker of public warning software solutions to analyze risk and help governments respond to safety. Everbridge has announced its custom solutions will be providing a comprehensive risk data intelligence feed for the Summer Games, designed to mitigate potential disruptions and ensure a safe environment. They'll also be providing critical event management capabilities, including mass notification, incident management, coordination tools, and security devices. Congratulations to Everbridge for this work. The regional medical campus collaboration between Leahy Hospital and UMass Chan Medical School has finished construction as preparing to welcome its inaugural class this summer. About 25 medical students will matriculate in the first class, following the core curriculum of the TH Chan School of Medicine in Worcester, with an added focus on leadership, health systems science, and interprofessional education, according to Leahy. May is Asian and Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And to celebrate, B News is highlighting Chinese-American chef and restaurateur Iverson Guo, master sushi chef and owner of Karma Asian Fusion. Iverson says, just like his father makes visual art with his paintings, he makes art with his food.
Iverson Guo came to the United States from mainland China when he was 20 years old, and started working as a dishwasher in New York City restaurants. But it wasn't long before he became a master sushi chef and opened his own restaurants.
A lot of people talk about food's love, right? Food really making the connection with the people. I think over the years, we are very, very lucky to know some very good people. They help Karma grow.
Iverson says he infuses his cultural and family background into everything he does, including featuring a work of art made by his father.
So this is his painting. He's an artist, but I tried to kind of like transform his art to the food. So you know sushi is also about the presentation, about the flavor, the presentation, the experience. So maybe that's another reason why I love making sushi. I so enjoy it because it's art.
So working in Burlington at Karma has been a bit of two cultures coming together. Food is an integral part of Asian culture, and it's like a shared reciprocity at the table. Nothing is more intimate or more filled with honor than to share a meal with somebody. So we try to convey that feeling in our restaurant.
I'm very proud to be an Asian American. And I think I'm doing the food business. Food really shows the culture. It's a different presentation to the people here. It's a diversity and everyone bringing their own knowledge, skill set, and experience. Really enhance our food experience. And that's how I enjoy it so much.
For B News Weekly, I'm Sidney Bowles.
If you like sushi, you gotta try Karma Asian Fusion. Yes. July 4th may seem quite a ways away, but for the committee in charge of one of Burlington's biggest events, it's right around the corner. B News reporter Robert Paris says they're gearing up for a major fundraiser.
We are just a couple of months away from our nation's birthday, Independence Day. It would not be a celebration without the Burlington Fourth of July Parade. In June, the committee is having a cornhole fundraiser down at the American Legion.
Shave it up to be a great fundraiser. We have a cornhole tournament on Sunday, June 9. You can register online or pay at the door. Registration opens 11:00 AM day of. Bags fly at noon. We're going to have cash bar, food, raffle prizes. It's going to be a great day. We're hoping to have a lot of folks out, raise some money for the parade.
The parade is jam-packed with many floats. And Nick Priest is hoping the weather will hold up.
You know, we've got a full accompaniment of the Lepo Shriners this year, coming out with everything. We have a lot of mainstays coming back, like the Boston Fireman's Band, you know, which are always great. And you know, really enjoy having them. Going to have some performances and some entertainment. Obviously, you know, we've got a lot of great sponsors and local businesses that are participating as well. Bcat always. Linda has her float, and we love having, you know, Bcat in the parade. You know, a lot, a lot of great stuff. Hopefully they share the weather, you know, stays as great as it's been the last couple of years, you know, and we can have a wonderful sunshine day.
The committee is renaming the Outstanding Citizen Award in honor of Don Flaherty, a longtime Burlington Fourth of July committee member who passed away in March of 2022.
He was a huge, huge supporter and member of the parade committee. We chose to rename the Outstanding Citizen Award, the Don Flaherty Award for Most Outstanding Citizen, in memory and honor of him. We've yet to pick somebody. You know, nominations are open and folks can email us, you know, or call someone on the committee. We're happy to take nominations. And we're looking to find that next person.
Members of the armed forces are recognized as well.
That is somebody who is either retired or active. And we take nominations. And then, you know, that person also rides in the parade as our chosen grand marshal for the year.
There is still time to help out.
Folks can hop onto Facebook and find us there. We have a website, BurlingtonJuly4.com. You can go there and you can sign up to sponsor. You can sign up to donate. You can sign up to be a part of the committee. So keep an eye out at events. You might see us at a table. Otherwise, Facebook or our website, again, BurlingtonJuly4.com are all ways to reach us.
I'm Robert Paris for B News Weekly.
If you can't make the fundraiser, a contribution would be quite helpful. Atria Senior Living is committed to lifelong learning, and that's why they invited our very own producer Sidney Bowles to give a talk recently about how we make local news. Veris Conley has more.
Back in April, Bcat News producer Sidney Bowles gave a presentation to the Atria Senior Center about the exciting world of producing local news. Along with the seniors learning the ropes, we also wanted you, yes, you, to be able to learn a little something as well. So sprinkled throughout this video, we have intentionally left in mistakes and reporting no-nos for you to find. When reporting on current events and local goings-on, it's important to be prepared, timely, and get the whole story. In her presentation, she gave the seniors and staff of the Atria the chance to be in front of the camera to experience what it's like to be interviewed.
I worked for the town for 42 years. Glad to be at Atria. I'd love it. Marched in the Fourth of July parade. And I was really excited. I hope to do it again this year. I'm an outgoing person. I'm a people person. And I'd love it.
I've only been here a short time, but from what I see, it's a great city. I've met a lot of great people. I work for the greatest senior living center, Atria. Great team, great people. And I'm really happy here.
We also spoke with Sidney, as well as Diane Albaas, the Community Sales Director of Atria, about their hopes for the seniors following the presentation.
We like to do lifelong learning with our residents, always learning something new. And I think seeing a big picture of what it takes to put on the local news was something that would be interesting for them.
I really think it's an amazing opportunity to get to share a little bit about what we do. A lot of, especially the work of our incredible producers. And there are people in the community who are stepping up and working hard to make sure that the news gets out there.
If you can find all of the errors, then you may just have what it takes to be a reporter yourself. Bcat is always looking for eager volunteers. So be sure to head to BcatTV.org for more information on how to find us. This is Veris Conley from B News.
It takes a collaboration of 11 or 12 staff and volunteers on a weekly basis to put the news together. Every summer, the Burlington Community Garden donates its harvest to the People Helping People Food Pantry. And B News is embarking on a series following the garden through its growing season. Tad Stefanak brings us the first installment of that series, Good Gardening.
The majority of gardeners wait until Memorial Day weekend to get out and do all their planting, preparing the soil. And they end up by the end of the weekend totally exhausted and not happy about gardening at all. So what we're trying to do now is take advantage of the cooler weather in early May and get some things done so that when it comes time to planting on Memorial Day weekend, all you have to do is sow the seed or dig a hole and put the plant in. So let's talk about a few things you can do. First, consider making a planting stick. Here at the Community Garden, our beds are 30 inches wide with an aisle space of 18 inches. That allows us to maintain 24 inches. We still have six inches of space on the bed and then 18 inches of walking area. So a planting stick is an ideal thing to have with you. Before you even do that, you should have prepared a planting schedule, things that you're going to put in the ground. Here at the garden, we have 42 planting beds. So we need to do this. You at home, maybe you only have a couple of planting beds. And in the back, keep track of what you have planted, what you bought for seed, what the proper spacing is, when you put them in the ground, when you could probably start harvesting them. This is just so helpful for you in advance if you take care of this so that you don't have to think about it when you actually are out there planting. You pull this out, this is where it's going, I'm good to go. So let's talk a little bit about preparing the beds. As I mentioned earlier, our beds are 30 inches wide and 42 feet long. And what we've done is put PVC pipe at the corners of all of the beds. And we run a string, and it's yellow so you can see it against the ground. But we run a string to make these nice straight lines. Then we turn our beds and rake it out. So when you take a look at the beds, they're already leveled and raked and ready for planting. And we do that well in advance because we don't want to, again, try to kill ourselves during the Memorial Day weekend, but also to allow the soil to settle a little bit. And any microbes that got dispersed can kind of coalesce back in place. We can get some fertilizer in, rake that in, then we're ready to go. So one of the things that is growing right now and is ready for harvest is our rhubarb. Rhubarb is planted in the fall. Now's a good time to split it if you have it. And some of it is ready for harvest. And the way to harvest rhubarb is to go in to the base of the plant and just give it a twist. Now you need to remember, this is not edible. This is a pot that's edible. If you think you're ready to garden, everything's bought, everything's ready to go in the ground, but you still have to turn some soil or something, then think again. Now's the time to do some work on your tools, especially your shovel. Anytime you're trying to cut into a lawn or a bunch of weeds or things like that, and you find yourself doing the bunny hop on top of the shovel to penetrate the sod, that means that this section is not sharp. You want this to be like a knife edge. And the way to do that is with this rectangular file. It's called a bastard file. Lay your shovel on something level and then hold the file level to whatever you're chopping it on. And then just... But if you look now at the sharpened side versus the unchop-edged side, you'll see the difference between this nice knife edge and nothing here.
A quick reminder before we turn to local sports. The Board of Health this weekend is hosting a Household Hazardous Waste Day for residents only. This Saturday, May 18, from 8:30 AM to 12:00 noon, bring your pool chemicals, chemical fertilizers, toxic cleaning projects, and non-alkaline batteries and other products to Fox Hill School for a safe disposal. Okay, let's turn it over to birthday boy Anthony Matos for a look at BHS Sports.
Hey, everyone. I'm Anthony Matos. This is Weekly Sports Report. A lot to get to this week, so let's hop into it. We begin with B News Sports reporter Robert Paris, who was at the BHS alumni game at the Ice Palace.
The BHS Hockey Association held their 26th Alumni Game at the Burlington Ice Palace earlier this month.
At the beginning, it was an effort of like former captains and people who wanted to get together and get the hockey players together. And it's just evolved into a reunion, a reunion of sorts that the people who still play can play.
Among the alumni players were Terry Hatch and Bobby Concepcion, both of whom are hockey alumni committee members.
We have a great hockey community here in Burlington. I think this, it just shows that guys, the same guys keep coming back year after year. Again, some years were a little bit lighter in players, some years where we have more.
It's great to get together once a year with all the alumni. It's such a tradition in Burlington. And every year, just a great showing and support for the team. And it's just such a great tradition, like I said before.
I also spoke with Anthony Nicolopoulos, who played in the second game. And he was very excited to return to the place he called home.
It's great to be back. Obviously, I had such a great time playing for Burlington High back in the day. So it's always fun to just come back here and see some familiar faces.
As the day went on, graduates came by and talked with both of their former coaches.
Both of them were so important to me, just growing up as a person and a hockey player. So it's always good to get the chance to see them again.
And the committee hopes the tradition will continue for many years.
The same families who had kids go through Burlington High Hockey have donated just because they had such a great experience in this program. So it's really a testament to the way that this program has evolved and continues to have that community feel. And we just want to continue to give back to our players.
I like just seeing everybody, whether they play or not. It's just a matter of them showing their appreciation for playing in our program. And I think that's what I get the most out of it, is that most people really have fond memories of playing Burlington High School hockey. The most important thing is that we give scholarships to hockey players. And we've given over $30,000, $35,000 over the years we've had it, so.
I'm Robert Paris for B News Sports.
Softball is down nine and eight after back-to-back losses to Wakefield 11-9 and Wilmington 15-3. The team then had a match on Wednesday against Melrose, where they won easily 12-2. Their next game is against Westfield High School on Saturday at 11:00 AM. As of May 14, they sit in 32nd place in the MIAA standings. Baseball continues to be red hot as they've won back-to-back games against Wilmington and Wakefield. Against the Warriors, they won 7-5. And against the Wildcats, they had an easy 17-0 blowout. They look to bring the winning streak up to six as they take on the Stonem on Friday against Spartans. Their record stands at 10-5. And as of May 14, the boys sit in 30th place in the MIAA standings. It was senior night at Varsity Field on May 13 for girls lacrosse. They took on the Wilmington Wildcats and won in a blowout fashion, 18-2. Their record improves to 10-5. And their next game is against Stonem on Friday. The Devs currently sit in 9th place in the MIAA standings. Boys lacrosse continues their dominance as they won against Wilmington as well on May 13, as they won by almost the same score, 19-2. Next up for the Devs is Stonem at home on Friday. They stand at 12-4 in the season and 6th place in the MIAA standings. Girls tennis had a match against Wilmington on May 14. They lost the match 4-1. The Devils' team of Therese Kozinski and Phoenix Mahoney won the only match. Then on senior night on the 16th, the girls came away with a 3-2 win over Stonem. Winners in the match were Mason Alonji in the singles match, and the duos of Jules Piscatelli and Alessia Pedruzi and Mahoney and Kozinski. Next up is Arlington on the 17th. As is taping, the match is still to be played. Their record stands at 9-5 and currently sits in 6th place in the MIAA standings. Boys tennis is red hot, winning six of their last seven games and three this week. A 3-2 win over Wakefield, a 4-1 win over Wilmington, and a 5-0 win over Stonem. Their record currently sits at 10-4. And next up is Arlington on May 17. And as of this taping, the match is yet to be played. The Devils are in 10th place in the MIAA standings. Both the girls and boys track teams competed with Stonem on May 9. In the boys' meet, they won by a score of 104.5 to 31.5. That marks the fifth consecutive undefeated spring track season for the Devils. As for the girls, they won 85-51, and they finished at 3-2 on the season. Then it was the Middle Sex League Championship Meet. First of the boys finished in 3rd place with 94 points. Top finishes were Ryan Brooks in the long jump in the javelin, Julian Sack on the shot put, and 2nd place finishes from Sean Cox in the 100 meter, Chris Williams the shot put, and Leonis Akandi in the high jump. As for the girls, they finished in 6th place with 49 points. For full results for the teams, go to the following website. Boys volleyball went 1-2 this week after losses against Winchester and Arlington 3-0 and 3-2 respectfully. And it went over Salem on the 16th, and we have these highlights.
The Devils were home against Salem High. Let's get to the court. In the first set, Burlington was the first to get to the set point of 25. Salem had 15 points. Burlington won the next two sets, with Salem scoring 18 in the second and 17 in the third. A 3-0 shutout win for Burlington at home.
The team currently sits at 7-9. And next up is at Wakefield on the 18th at 10:00 AM. The Devs sit at 20th place in the MIAA standings. Unified basketball finished regular season at 5-0 with wins against Melrose, Watertown, and Stonem in Redding. We have highlights from the Lexington game.
It was the season finale for the Bronze Red Devil Unified Basketball Team as they competed with their Lexington Minutemen. The Devils had a great first half as they outscored their opponent by 28 points. Lexington scored 18 points in the first. Burlington kept it going in the second half by adding another 39 points. Lexington added 32. 67-50 final score, Devils.
Burlington will be in Wakefield on May 22 for a jamboree game. For more Red Devil action, go to BGETTV.org/sports and check out our Twitter page @BNewsSports. That's all for now. I'm Anthony Matos. Bet you guys in studio.
Now let's take a look at the forecast for golf with weatherman Peter Brown, and stay tuned for your community calendar with Gretchen Carey.
Well, hello, everyone. This is Peter Brown with a look at your weather for the next seven days. Here we are heading in towards the third week of May, getting very close to the unofficial start of summer. The Memorial Day weekend is coming up very soon. Now, starting out on period on Friday, we are going to see the chance of some showers out there, some spotty showers for most of the weekend. So it doesn't look like a great weekend. Doesn't look like we're going to have any wall-to-wall sunshine out there. As we get towards the end of the period, we should be seeing temperatures in the, again, low to mid 70s. to mid 70s, and we're pretty much going to be there when we get towards the end of next week. Looks like our temperature's going to get into the mid to upper 70s, maybe getting closer to 80. And of course, now, as we head in towards the middle of May, so let's go ahead, let's take a look what the Climate Prediction Center is calling for us in terms of temperatures and precipitation over the next seven to 10 days. Looking at our temperature map, they are calling for us to have a good chance of above-average temperatures. Doesn't look like that's going to pan out for this weekend and the start of the work week. Looks like we're going to have to wait again until we get to probably Tuesday and Wednesday of next week, but that warm weather will be coming back. And looking at our precipitation chances, this is actually nice for a change. Looks like we're going to have just average precipitation. That's what I'm seeing as well, is we're just going to see some of those spotty showers to start out our weekend and going into the start of next work week. So, let's go ahead, let's take a look at those seven days of weather coming up. And again, as we start out the weekend, and then Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, again, it's another weekend where hopefully we're going to see some sunny breaks, but it's going to be spotty showers out there, kind of cloudy, maybe a little bit gloomy from time to time, and temperatures pretty cool, staying down in the low to mid 60s. You know, of course, once again, as you head back to work on Monday, showery conditions are going to stay with us, temperatures staying in the mid 60s. But thereafter, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, looks like that sun is really going to come out, and that's going to boost our temperatures, hopefully up into and around 70 on Tuesday, and maybe up into the mid to upper 70s by Thursday. So, everyone, get out there, enjoy the weather, and have a great week.
Hi, I'm Amy Poehler, and you're watching B- Cat. Go Red Devils.
Hey, everyone. I'm Gretchen Carey, and this is your community calendar.
On May 21st, from 6:30 to 7:30 PM, the Burlington Public Library will be having a Meet the Chef series featuring Shane Kiros from Legal Seafoods. Everyone is welcome, and the event is free. Also, on May 21st, from 10:30 AM to 12:30 PM, the Made in Burlington store will be having an event called Splendid Day, creating a birthday sympathy, thank you, or get well card. Pre-registration is required. To register, go to the following website. On May 27th at 10:00 AM, the Town of Burlington Veteran Services will be having the annual Memorial Day Ceremony at the Veterans Section of the Chestnut Hill Cemetery. Everyone is welcome to the event. For more information, go to burlington.org.
For more community calendar events, go to bcattv.org, burlingtonpubliclibrary.org, and burlingtonrecreation.org. I'm Gretchen Carey, and that was your community calendar.
As we do each week, we're wrapping up with a photo sent in by a member of the community. Joe Brown sent this one in. It's, of course, of the Aurora Borealis that was visible in town recently. Thank you, Joe. If you have a photo you'd like to see featured here and share with the community, email it to us at bcat@bcattv.org with the subject line Photo of the Week. And that's our program for this week. I'll leave you with a quick montage of a junior and senior promenade that took place this week, put together by our own Robert Paris. I'm Phil Gallagher. Thank you for watching, and I'll see you here right, see you right here next week.